Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024. It is 4:00 PM. This is the meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting will be audio and video recorded. Please rise for the pleasure of the legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first on the agenda. This is something I wanted to add into this because I think this person deserves recognition for years and years of service to our community. And Everett, you will be greatly missed by our community, and we appreciate you. We put together a citation for Everett. If anybody doesn't know, Everett has protected this town in many ways over the years, and it's very much a well-deserved retirement from town government, but we will miss you. And I wanted to make sure that the town knows that we appreciate you. So we put together a citation for you, and I will read it here. It says, "Be it known that the Akushnet Board of Selectmen hereby extends its thankfulness and congratulations to Everett Villa. The Board of Selectmen would like to recognize your dedication, selflessness, and care for our town. Your many years of service throughout various positions in town have truly shown how much you love Akushnet, and your dedication to our community will never be forgotten. Ordered this day, December 3rd, 2024." Everett? Very much appreciated.
That's why I'm retiring. Excuse me. Thank you very much. It's been a lot to serve the town. And I just know I'm getting too old for the position I was in. My health is not that well. And before I get hurt out in the field, I feared somebody else, young, could take the job. And I urge anybody who likes the environment, who loves this town, who likes anything to do with nature, to look into a position. There could be two on conservation that need to be filled. And you're going to see more of this town than you ever going to see driving on the streets. This is absolutely beautiful places you're never going to see unless you're out in the woods. And I thank the town for the opportunity to have been able to do that. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Make sure I don't fall over too. Thank you, Everett.
Thanks.
Appreciate everything you've done. Are you still going to work in the Elections Division?
Yeah.
All right. So you're not running right completely?
Not totally.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have appointment of Building Department Senior Clerk Lori Walsh. Review of matters presented. Votes may be taken. So I believe Mr. Kelly and Mr. Warner sat through this, and it looks like she's got extensive background in municipal business, and also a former employee of Akushnet.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, given that, but also just understanding town of Akushnet, knowing it, was really what made her an attractive candidate, be able to plug and play. And she's worked well with others in the Parting Ways Building over the years and understands those areas of responsibility, so hopefully the board will consider appointing her.
And the motion to appoint Lori Walsh to the Building Department Senior Clerk position.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
FY26 revenue. I'll turn this one over to Mr. Kelly.
This is the first pass at the FY26 estimates. And there are a couple issues that you'll see. The highlighted in red is an increase in veterans, even though that is something that is, comes back to the town from the state. And talking to the Veterans Agent, he gave me the heads up that there'll be an increase in the money that is given to the veterans in services, et cetera. And I think it's a valid point, but the money you see there is what we get back. You will see an orange blank in the column, and that's because we have no idea what we're going to be getting from the meals tax. The first one comes in, we hope, from the state, the end of January, February, and then we'll be able to extrapolate. Without the meals tax, we are looking at a increase in revenue of approximately $561,000. Part of that is because of the lack of use of overlay surplus that we used last year. That's a hole we have to make up. And me being extremely conservative in a number of local receipts, mainly because we're looking at incomplete local receipts for 25 versus the estimate to see if we come close. And since we only have a five-month run at it, I do not want to go beyond my conservative estimate. Usually, this is where I start, and it gets up to $700,000, $750,000 by the time I'm done. And the first pass at expenses are $1,005,000. Last year, we had over $1,000,000, so this year, my worry is only of between $700,000 and $800,000 difference.
Gentlemen?
Obviously can't have expenses going up at 1.5 every year when you only have a revenue stream going up $700,000, $800,000, right? So you look at some of the paperwork that we have, and I know that we're doing a public hearing. On the recap sheet, we have new growth differentiated from what Ms. Coska's plugged in on her tax class paperwork, so you might have like 20 grand. And the other thing I'd like to say is, when you calculate the levy, the less revenues you do, the more dependent you are on taxation. So I think we need to conquer that as well, right? So if you're underestimating revenues too much, that's putting more burden on the taxpayers to rely on tax dollars to raise that amount of money that's needed, right?
Or we have to cut expenses.
We need to, we need to look at it.
Which we did.
Stop being a little bit more realistic, and we'll figure it out as we move forward. But right now, that's my opinion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Warner?
You may recall, last year, I raised, we had talked about it, you know, like two or three concepts. One was the meals tax. While I wasn't thrilled about it, it was one of the options. And the other one we talked about was with solar projects, new solar projects, the possibility of pilots. And I don't know if you, where any of those stand, but, you know, we had always fenced off the solar money because of the depreciating asset, and I think we were smart to do that. You know, that was Mr. Gasper's initiative, and that has put us in a position to take care of some things, you know, in town, school roofs, whatever, whatever. But, you know, the concept of the pilot, I think that, you know, the title, the acronym's a little misleading. It's Payment Move Taxes. Obviously, they pay taxes. It's just getting a fixed tax bill over the period of the, you know, the life of the, you know, the project. And I think, from what I recall, we had probably, what, three or four projects in the queue? New proj- I don't know. Do you mark?
We have approximately three that are still pending. We have one that will be starting up shortly, and we have three, I think, that are waiting for interconnection agreements.
So, you know, I don't know how we can jumpstart those conversations, but again, I know, all right, 25 years down the road, we never want to saddle future generations, but we've got an immediate problem right here. And if we can get, you know, a stable source of revenue for a 20-year span that we can count on, I think it's, we got to look at that. You know, that is one piece of the puzzle. And, you know, we do also have some town-owned land, you know, like we've got the, what was the Quake, what we call the Quaker Wells property, it's down in the valley. It's just sitting there. I mean, I don't know if that's a developable piece of land for a solar project. I mean, I think the rub on solar projects nowadays is you're clearing out visible land that you can see, but like if a project's in the valley and it's not an impact on the environment, I just think we got to continue to be creative until we can get some like real hardcore businesses in here, you know? So anyway, so the planning board, the board's still open to pilots? I think we are, and that has to go to town meeting, I think eventually, to get codified. But I'd like to at least have some, maybe sightlines into that. You know, people that you're talking to, survey them, like, would you be open to a pilot? You know, when I understand the soul of developers prefer that, because they can present that to the banks.
Right. Yeah, I'm on board with anything out of the box at this point. It doesn't hurt to find out. It doesn't hurt to get the information and pull what we can from it. I just don't know what the requirements would be. Can we, anybody that's already applied, can we ask them about it? Or basically, do we have to go through town meeting and then present it to anybody that's new?
Now that I think about it, town meeting gave us the authority.
We've already got authority from town meeting to negotiate within, with a solar field, to do, enter into pilots. I think if we do enter into that agreement, do we have to take that back to town meeting? That particular agreement?
That's right, because we did that bylaw like last year.
Was it? It was, yeah, it was just like a year ago, right? We kind of compounded on those things. I mean, you just got to be careful of, because it's, every time you raise revenue, somebody's spending it, right? So it's kind of like a whip-saw effect of, you know, everybody's chasing the almighty dollar, and it comes down to how much money are we spending every year as a small community? We're spending a lot of money year over year, right? And some of it is just pertaining to fixed costs, but you got to look at everything you can and see where we're at, and figure out how we're going to do it and how we go down the road. Even if you enter into a pilot, nobody says that you take 100% of the revenue stream from year one and go, oh, that's for budgetary reasons, right? You could take five or 10 grand and put it in the kitty, right? The solar revenue fund itself.
Yep. I think we'll have to ask town council how the pilot would act with the special act, and whether we'd have to take the money from the pilot and put it in the special act fund, or whether it would go into the general fund.
So the special act that we did, just like Mr. Warner was on the board with me when we got creative with the special act, right? It was the first of its kind of the Commonwealth. It's done this town and the taxpayers of this town a lot of justice, right? We've done a lot with that revenue stream to keep debt exclusions off the backs of our taxpayers. So it's an asset to the community, but I agree that we, if there's a way to co-mingle the monies, that's the most optimal way to go, right? Path to go down is if we could do that, so we could just start asking questions, right? I mean, we got those revenues going, every year going in with the existing ones. Not saying this is optimal, but to go along with Ms. DeMona, if there was three in queue, do you break those three off and do something differently with those revenues, right? I mean, there's a way to keep the queue running in that special legislation that we did, that special act that we created, to keep infrastructure money there, right? And then there's a way to take some money from the future ones, the three or four that are in queue, and break that off and say, this is what we're going to do moving forward. But the revenue coming in on the 20 years, some of these things are relatively new, some only a few years old, keep those running in the special act.
I was just worried if you have to put it in the special act and then have it as part of maybe the budget motion or a separate motion in town meeting, take it out.
We'll start asking questions now, right? And then once we figure out the answers to it, we can get engaged with the people that are in queue, right? They haven't fired up, they're not even, some of them aren't even being built right now. They're still struggling with notices of intent and things of the light with CONCON, whether it's CONCON Planning. Well, we ought to start getting active on those conversations, figure out what we can do with revenue versus what we can't do, and then maybe we petition some of these applicants and say, hey, you know, let's sit down and have that conversation, as Mr. Warner alluded to, and see where they're at.
Yeah, Mr. Kelly, if you'd like to reach out to town council, get some answers, this way we can put something together. It's better to have more options.
The town council and DOR.
Yep. Financial policy, review of matters presented. Is this just you?
Updating. We have met with two of the unions. We have a third union that we're meeting with on Friday, the 13th. Lucky day. And we are, we've had comments from the Steelworkers Union, and we've had comments from the labors. The labors just sent us a second comment in an email this afternoon, just concerning one sentence. Once we meet with the third union, we evolve. The council has also sent them the redline version, the third union, so they know what was there originally and what's been changed. Then we'll come back to the board with it.
Perfect.
We seem to have some agreement. I think what Mr. Kelly's trying to say is, we seem to have some agreement with D W Labor's Union and Steelworkers Union. I sat in both of those with Mr. Kelly, so, and town council, so we're getting there.
Yep, and I think like Mr. Kelly just said, by sending the redline version to ASME, if there's any problems that they had that are resolved with the new updated version, we can resolve it a lot quicker and get through it. And like Mr. Kelly said, we are meeting, him and I will be meeting with ASME on Friday, the 13th. Excellent. All right. One-day liquor license, Diamond in the Rough. Gentlemen, Diamond in the Rough does this every year. They did get approvals from the police chief, fire chief, building commissioner, all the tips certification is in here, liability. And I would ask if there's a motion?
Motion to approve the one-day wine and malt beverage license to Diamond in the Rough.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Master plan discussion. Gentlemen, originally, this was to talk about the committee, but I wanted to open this up a little bit, so I put discussion for a master plan. Victoria's here, the town planner, along with the chairman of the planning board, Mark Francois. I'd open it up if anybody has any questions to ask Victoria and Mark, either or, and we can start putting something together.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions that have been through this process before. I don't know, maybe it would just help the audience if Victoria and Mark could speak to it, you know, like what they put in paper, speak to it.
Yeah.
And, you know, I know the, what level of outreach they'll be and so on and so forth.
Yeah, of course. So for the record, hi, Victoria Alvaro, town planner, and Mark Francois is here as well, planning board chair. So just a little background on what the master plan is. So we, the town received $100,000 grant from the One Stop Community, One Stop for Growth to update the master plan, which was previously completed in 2008. A master plan is a comprehensive, long-range planning document that outlines goals for the community in several areas such as economic development, land use, and natural resources. We also have funding from an earmark through Rep. Schmidt's office for $25,000 that will also help complete the plan. Our regional planning agency, Serp Bed, is our consultant for this project, and will be sort of spearheading this with the help of town staff and the master plan committee once it's established. We did hold a kickoff meeting with our department heads on November 18th to sort of kick-start the plan, make sure we knew about any ongoing projects, planned projects for different departments, and even, you know, planning documents like a capital improvement plan that some departments may already have. So that leads me to the master plan committee, which will need to be established, and they will work closely with Serp Bed on this effort. As proposed, the master plan committee will consist of two planning board members, myself, the town planner, one Board of Selectmen member, and a member of the public. Responsibilities for being on this committee include attending monthly meetings at a date and time that will be determined by the committee members, as well as working closely with Serp Bed, town staff, and the public on the development of the plan. Attending outreach events to promote the plan is extremely crucial, as well as providing feedback on materials provided by Serp Bed. So due to the funding constraints of the grant that we received, which has a deadline of the end of June 2025, most of the outreach and public engagement will be done in the first six months. There will be some other events that will happen later on, but a majority of it will happen in the beginning. Also, due to the accelerated timeline, master plans typically take about two years, but this one, we hope to have completed in one. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Gasper?
So on your note that you have here, it says, "Town received $100,000 grant." You just said that from One Stop, right?
Correct.
Okay, and it says, "Due to funding constraints," in the third paragraph, "town funding constraints of the grant received having a deadline of 6/30/2024." So my first comment would be, who applied for the grant?
That was prior to me coming on with the town. I believe it was Jen Thompson from Capital Strategies.
No, she was, originally, it was the prior planner. And he applied for the original grant, and then we also funded money out of CPC, which is still there. And then we, we had opportunity to increase the grant and get the earmark. So at that point, Jen Thompson did the grant application, and we increased it from, I think it was $25,000 originally to $100,000.
So I'm just confused, because it says, "We received $100,000 grant from One Stop for Growth," and then it says the deadline is 6/30/2024.
Yeah, that was in Everett, I meant 2025.
But if I went online on mass.gov, I typed in Akushnet, and I looked at all the 2025 applications that have been approved, Akushnet, zero results. Entries filtered from 315 entries, so Akushnet is not showing up on that website as any funding approved. Can you answer to that?
I'm not sure what website you're looking at, but we do have a contract.
The One Stop from mass.gov?
Yeah.
And it's bought 2025 projects, and Akushnet doesn't show up at all?
I'm not sure if that's for this fiscal year that just happened. They just had a recent application period that I do not believe the town applied for. This is from the previous year's award, because this, I believe, was awarded sometime last year or earlier this year, which is why we have the deadline of 2025.
I don't remember authorizing anybody to go for a grant, that's the problem. And it's only the Board of Selectmen that can do that. So I would ask for a copy of the grant application form, so we can see what one we applied on the, because my next question was, what grant did we apply for under the One Stop program? Because there's multiple grants and programs in the One Stop grant program. And I want to know which one we applied for before we start taking money.
Sure, it would have, it would have been a community planning grant, to be able to get funding for a master plan.
Well, that's the one I'm hoping that it's from, because I know the town of Ethel did it, and they got 125 grand for a community planning grant program. But there's multiple different programs within the One Stop, and there was one that I actually talked about a while back and killed it, was the Housing Choice Grant, right? Because it's tying us to MBTA, which is...
This was the planning grant.
I know, I just, I don't know who authorized the apply for the grant, that's all I'm saying. It's only the Board of Selectmen could do it. We have an email from Pam LeBon, he's saying that, right? So we never did it.
I will pull records on it. I remember talking to the board about it, probably over a year ago.
I'd like to see a copy of the grant application form, so we know what we're applying for before we start spending money.
This grant, to the best of my knowledge, was applied for and approved or received prior to both Victoria and myself. I might have been on the board, but not as chair, because this was, once I became chair, I was told that we had the grant.
Right, but then he said there was a renewal by Jen. We've only had Jen for a couple of years, right? From C something, CSC or whatever it is.
Capital Strategies.
Yeah, Capital Strategies, right? And so I just want to see that. I want to see who authorized that, because I don't believe it was this board that was signing that.
What's, I just want to know, what's the concern that we might be tied to some restrictions?
I think the Board of Selectmen need to understand, before we go and apply for grants and tie our community to certain people or the state or agencies, we understand what we're signing on. And I know I didn't sign anything for a grant, so I just want to see who did it. I want to see the grant application form and how it was signed off, and I'm hoping that if that's all it is, is a community planning grant program, that would be nice, if that's all that it is, right? But when I looked at that grant program that's listed inside here, the One Stop option thing, I'm like, well, there's a lot of different programs in there, and you could be getting yourself tied up with different people, so I just want to make sure that doesn't happen.
Sure, I can send you through Jamie, all the documentation I received from Jen when I came on.
I have one item of note specifically for this. I remember discussing the $25,000 from Rep. Schmidt's office, and I remember in that conversation as a board, I believe it was Mr. Gasper that brought up a good point involving Paul Sullivan. And through that meeting and then multiple follow-ups with Jamie, we had discussed, because of his extensive knowledge of not only the town, but a lot of the process, that that would go towards, I guess you could say, the clerical aspect of it.
The support.
The support of it. And I would just like to know if Paul has been involved in this, simply because I know that Paul spent quite a bit of time in that office by himself, putting together extensive notes and folders and binders and paperwork on updating our master plan in correlation with what was done in 2008. I believe that, yes, we need a master plan, we need it updated, but I think there was a lot of substance in the past one that can outstreamline the process, and we're not starting from scratch. And I'm just curious to see if Paul has been involved in any of this.
I was with Paul last week. We actually have a meeting this Thursday, the two of us, with Paul and Pam, to discuss the role that Paul will be taking in either the master plan or other issues.
Sure. He's an extensive wealth of knowledge and capability, and I think it would be a disservice to this town to not have him involved, simply because of his years of doing this, and he can run through bylaws and regulations right from the top of his head.
Agreed.
And he's an excellent researcher, and I really want to make sure that Paul's involved in this. I'd like the capacity to be what we had originally discussed when we discussed the $25,000, which is ultimately that he is, I don't want to say point person on the research and the, and the information, but it would definitely be a benefit of this town to make sure Paul is involved in this.
Agreed.
Mr. Chairman, while we're on this subject, you know, I guess this is part of master plan, but I think there's a few opportunities/threats, you know, that we should be, I just want to flag while you're here.
Sure.
Don't get to talk that often. One is, we know Keith's property, Keith's orchard, tree farm.
Yep.
Family passed away. That's a huge swath of land. Who knows what's going to happen there? I've heard that it may be going to the Fehaven Akushnet Land Trust, but that was a working farm that was economic development, that was, you know, really a heartbeat of that That was, uh, you know, really a heartbeat of that part of town in the fall. And I think we got to think about like, what's going to go on over there, right? That's number one. Number two, we're both in the same hospitality industry. I think we might only have one beer and wine license available, right? And I, I just think, you know, if we haven't pursued, municipalities have gone for whole rule petition, even if it's asking for three or four, you know, I think, you know, long has passed the day when bar rooms were considered, you know, a detriment in a community. Now it's economic development opportunity. If somebody wanted to open up a beer garden or one of the farmers in town wanted to do something where, you know, you see in Faven with the, the winery that opened up or in Westport Buzzards Bay Brewery, like those are the things I think we've got to like really be paying attention to. Um, and I was just in Austin, Texas a few weeks ago. And very similar to South Main Street, where houses that were converted into, I went to this restaurant. It was like, it felt like it was, you know, it was in a house. It was an old house that was turned into a restaurant and it was awesome, you know? So maybe there's things that are so obvious to us that we just pass by every day because we never think, well, that couldn't be something. But I think we're going to lean into the hospitality industry and see if there's a way that we can jumpstart that in some shape or form. I don't know what, but you know, it could be an old, uh, somebody's, somebody's garage or farm that they want to turn into a distillery or brewery or winery or something or other.
No, I agree. And that's one of the things that we're going to look at as a committee. And not only for the open space, uh, part of it, but, uh, maybe take a look at zoning, at maybe looking to see if changing the zoning in small ways can add restaurants or, you know, hospitality in certain areas of town. Uh, all of that's on the table. Uh, I totally agree with you. We got to get, in my opinion, we got to get more commercial, more, you know, tax-based revenue in the town. So it doesn't fall on taxpayers, uh, backs. That's one of the main things of the master plan in the committee.
So the Keith Tree Farm is already in Faven, Acushnet Faven Land Trust.
It's already in.
So yeah, it's a, there's a big, there's a garage. It's got the sign on it. It's always been there. It's already been, I think, believe it's been already taken over, whatever it is. I don't know if deeds have transferred, but I, I think there's already some.
There's some.
Still in the deed, but I think, so that people at home don't get too confused on what selectmen and board members are saying about, like, we're not looking to develop the property. But I think, I don't want to speak to them, but I think keeping it open space and maybe talking to Acushnet Faven Land Trust and maybe be able to bring it back into the agricultural life. And maybe because there are several buildings on the property, that would be an ideal spot for a winery, right? A brewery, right? And I think that's really the scope is not really screwing around with all the land that's back there, right? Just having somebody harvesting crop back there and agriculture, we still our agricultural, um, community. Um, so we have, we're a right to farm community anyway. So I think that's where really what we're going and, and, and maybe that's the spot, right? And I, and I, I think I said it to you. I don't think Victoria was here, but I'll say it again. It's basically an update of the master plan, change the date on it, do a few ins and outs on it, right? And, and, and different zoning areas and look at some different parcels of property to do things. And you just open up the Business Village District. It runs from the Acushnet Faven Town Line, a hundred and fifty feet in, I think, from the center of the road or the edge of the road or whatever, on both sides of the road. And it clips all the way down to Pol Pot. It stops, I believe, at the Creamery. The left side of the leg goes to Oliver Ave, which is literally a hundred, two hundred feet further, and it stops. Like, why don't we just run that Business Village District all the way to Leonard Street, right? Cause there's other businesses through that strip that are already businesses, right? So it doesn't make any sense to not have them included in the Business Village District. And if we change the Business Village to just a business district, whatever, however we want to do it and get rid of the village, because we're no longer in the village anymore, so be it, right? And then you do the same thing for Middle Road. You start at, uh, well, I'll call it Ball's Corner. Now they got a little island there and you rip it all the way down to Leonard Street again. And you stop dead at Leonard Street, whatever. Maybe it goes further. Maybe it goes Lake Street. I don't know. I'd stopped at Leonard Street for a reason because we have the schools, right? So you don't want to run into too much congestion over at the schools with, you know, opening up land and people blowing out houses in neighborhoods just to put businesses in. So that being said, we already have one large business right after the schools, right? It's a very successful one in town.
Yep.
Um, but you know, it might make sense to do something like that. They grandfathered it in, so I don't think that they're worried about it. But that's a way to open up business, right? I've said it a number of times. I've run a couple, Kelly, Ms. Koscus is sitting right behind you right now, our principal assessor, and we've done some, some playing around with the numbers, right? We, even if you added a hundred million dollars in commercial real estate, you're barely putting a dent in the tax rate. That's how unfortunate that is, right? So it's nice to do it. It'd be nice for community improvement, right? And, and opening up the business area of this town on our main corridors, right? It's kind of frustrating being somebody who lives on the Middle Road corridor where we don't have any businesses there, right? We all got to come shuffle over to the Main Street corridor if we want to go out to eat Blue Point Captain's, right? I mean, you've got Rochelle's down there. I mean, everybody's migrating to one side of town. I think we need to be creative and open up that corridor and allow better businesses, right?
Agreed.
So I think that's something that we need to do and is if you want a little bit more input, we're talking about with PJ Keating and doing, talking about a road in the back or whatever it may be. So we, we should be looking at that, all that land back there. The town owns abundance of land back there as well for economic development.
The one that kind of ties in with the two forty exit?
Correct.
Correct.
So I mean, that's something that if we identify in our master plan those tracts of land that's back there, if we identify that in our master plan, then we could be eligible to seek bigger grants. Um, and Mass Works has some really high grants that I've seen on the portal that I was just on in excess of four million dollars, some of these projects. I mean, there's, there's big money out there. My concern while we're talking about grants, not to get off track, is when I went on that portal and I seen some of these towns, what they were doing, it's aging water pipe, aging sewer pipe, aging, uh, dilapidated roadways, and again, two million, four million dollars. I asked myself a simple question, what the hell are we doing? We're, we're trying to do Slocum Street. We're scraping pennies together. And I'm like, if these, these grant programs are out there and the millions of dollars, why weren't we doing that a year or two ago in?
Ramping up plan it?
We did have a plan for one and then we did have one for a short period. And that's something that Victoria and I have spoken about numerous times. And that's something that we'll keep, obviously keep the board in the loop about. But looking at those grants is what one of our biggest focuses is going to be.
There's a lot of grants that don't tie us, handcuff us to other state agencies in the state, right? It's just, it's a one-time spend all. You get the money, have a nice day.
Yep.
That's, that's kind of great. We don't want grants where you're going to fund something for a year and it's going to cost taxpayers twenty or thirty grand every year thereafter. Once that grant's gone, that's, that's.
Agreed.
Right? But this, this, after looking at that list today, I was, I was blown away. I'm like, this, this is incredible. Like, you know, it doesn't take a Victoria to fill out a grant application. No disrespect, but it's a grant application, man. I mean, that, you know.
No.
Anybody with a pen.
Somebody to do it. That's, you need somebody.
Sit down and stop filling stuff out and all we do is submit it and say, hey, look what we got, right?
Right.
We, we don't need a specific title to fill out a grant application.
No.
Quite honestly, I'm going to be speaking with my DPW staff tomorrow and we're going to start going after these kind of grants, right? Through Mass Works. I mean, it has to be done.
Perfect.
There's too much money out there and there's no strings to tie to it.
It'd be nice for Acushnet to get it for a change.
I, I, I just can't believe that, you know, we got all the oppo money and we're struggling. We pull things from reserves, water reserves from, from, for the infrastructure and the road on Slocum Street. And we got Mass Works throwing two million, four million out to these towns. I'm like, what the, what the hell are we doing?
Right, agreed.
I got a, I got a governor that's sitting on a one point five million dollar transportation bond bill, right? And we're worried more about ADUs that we're going to jump into next. When we don't worry about giving the town of Acushnet from two thousand fourteen, one point five million out of Transportation Bond Bill. Figure that out.
All right. One more question I have involving the master plan committee.
Oh, I hadn't told you. We haven't gotten to that.
Well, we'll get to it now. I think there needs to be more people on this committee personally. I think especially finance, I think conservation has a place on this committee. And I think Board of Health actually has a place on this committee as well. And I'd like to engage more citizens as well. And it's not because I want to add fuel to the fire. I don't want to add more people to talk about it. But the master plan is extremely important to the community. It's a document that's going to sit for a long time and tell us how we're going to move forward. And having people that currently work in town, work for the committees in this town, be involved. My, my personal opinion is it's very important, um, even down to the DPW. I know technically we're the water and sewer commissioners and ultimately the DPW is under us. But we, and I'm speaking for myself, I don't know enough about what the DPW knows. Say, for instance, I was the representative from the board of selectmen. I think it'll slow it down. So I think the DPW should be involved, at least in a capacity where they have some kind of input. They know where all the water lines are. They know where everything is in this town from a functional standpoint. You know, they have maps and stuff like that. And I'd really like to see this committee be expanded. And that's just my personal opinion on this.
Yeah, if I can, um, speak to that a little bit.
Absolutely.
So the idea to have a smaller committee is because of our shortened timeframe. Um, we run into a lot of issues, um, with, or I should say, previously I've run into a lot of issues with when you have a larger committee, people aren't as committed to the project when it's a longer duration. We don't meet quorum. We are delaying the project. Um, so the idea behind having a smaller committee was that we have, you know, these five people who are committed to the project, who will show up at every meeting. And then when we need, um, you know, someone else's expertise, like CONCOM, when we're discussing natural resources in open space, we invite those people to our meetings. We invite them to the outreach events or set a meeting directly with them to go over these goals, strategies, their input. Um, so it's not that nobody else will be involved, it's that they won't be an official member of the committee as proposed.
I like the idea of what Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ingle just said, is more people, the better, right? And as far as a quorum goes, you only have five members. You have two that don't show up. You, you know, you have three that don't show up, you're done. The more, the merrier, as far as I'm concerned. So I, I, I couldn't agree with him more. And I, and I, I just want to touch base with Mr. Sullivan. Um, it's instrumental that Mr. Sullivan's involved with his master plan. End of story, right? We kept eighty-five, we put eighty-five hundred additional dollars in the planning board's budget because that man right there and that man right there asked for it. And that was all about Mr. Sullivan being part of the planning board in the future of the planning board.
Can I ask a question? Uh, this is the second time this has been brought up. Has something reached your ears saying that Mr. Sullivan was not involved in the master plan?
No, not me personally.
There's, there's nothing on this sheet that this motion that.
I'm just curious, I'm just curious.
Somebody wrote up a motion and it's Victoria Alfaro, Town Planner, Stephen Boucher and Peter Giamba from Planning Board. There's no mention of Paul Sullivan.
I was just curious if something reached anybody's ear saying that Paul wasn't involved in this? Because Paul will be involved in this. He got my word on that.
Well, when, we're talking about the committee. I'm just speaking for myself. And I appreciate, just me personally, I appreciate the outreach in suggesting that a member of the board of selectmen should be on the planning commission, on the, on the master plan committee. But I could create the argument that we should, we should keep an arm's length away from that process because ultimately it's going to, you know, we're part of a process that we're offering input on now and potentially just to keep the politics out of it, right?
I agree with you to one aspect, but I actually like the fact that Mr. Gasper has, um, well, not just you, but the board itself, has a lot of, um, knowledge of open spaces and different things that not, you know, that I personally don't even know. So to have somebody from the board of the select board that has, again, different knowledge that others don't have, I think is beneficial.
Yeah, no, I get that. And I think what, you know, Victoria was saying, suggesting is that we're all on call and available, right? To provide our insight and institutional knowledge. But, you know, again, we just, we just had a discussion here about, you know, Mr. Sullivan. And I just want to make sure that the board has somewhat of an arm's length away, but involved in the process. That's just me. That's how I feel about, how I felt about being on the golf committee and some of these other things that the board will have, you know, plenty of opportunity to provide input on. Um, it just allows us to be objective throughout the process. You know, like if there's a, there's a recommendation in there that one of us doesn't agree with, then I think we're going to be able to say that and speak freely on that. But if we have a board member, you know, then I think that just frustrates us in being objective in the process. Just, just my, just my feeling.
That's fine. I mean.
The same, the same, the same could be said for the planning board then, right? Or any other board, right? And I'm, I, I think the chairman's advocated for members of conservation, hundred percent on a committee, right? I, I, I have some notes, two members planning, two members CONCOM, one selectman, one board of health, absolutely necessary for the master plan. One DPW rep. I have actually wrote Kathy Silver's name because she knows the most about that office and she's a resource right at the tips of Victoria's fingers in that same building where if she needs something, hey, what's going on here with sewer? What's going on here with water? Um, she's a great resource, right? The one from the assessors, we have two individuals on the board of assessors, okay? That have abundance of experience, not only with this town, but in business. They'd be huge assets to the master plan, I believe. So one member, you're never having a quorum from none of these bodies. So you don't have to, you know, do double agendas on it. And then two members from FINCOM. I mean, right there alone, I'm up to like ten people, eleven people, right? And then you have three to five citizens at large. Who cares? The more, the merrier. The more input you get, the better off it's going to be. Instead of isolating this group into this small little nutshell with just a few people scrambling things around, things are going to be missed. If you're going to update the master plan, a lot of stuff in the, in the old master plan, just move the date and move it forward, right? It shouldn't be rocket science. I mean, a hundred thousand dollars to do a master plan. I sit there and shake my head going, what the hell are we spending a hundred thousand dollars on? But hey, if that's the cost of doing a master plan, town of the fall got a hundred and twenty-five grand. So I said, okay, maybe we're not so bad doing a hundred grand. I don't know. I just don't want outsiders, my problem is having outsiders, right? So the CERP people coming in and going, oh, this is how we're going to do it. This is what, this is what's best for your community. I, I don't really know what the role CERP is going to be playing in that.
Yeah, and I can speak a little bit more to, to CERP's role in it. In my previous community, I was in the middle of the master plan. We were just wrapping up. And CERP does not push any goals or any, they don't have their own agenda. That's really not how it works. They're there to help facilitate and to help take any feedback we receive from residents, from staff, anybody who, you know, participates in the outreach and helps translate that into goals and, and strategies of how we reach those goals for the town. Um, it's very town-specific. Um, I encourage you to view their website, look at the past master plans they've done. I think they recently completed Lakeville's, for example. Um, they do, they do a lot, um, with our commu, with our communities. It's definitely a master plan. It's, it's community-specific.
My concern with the size, and once again, I'm going to go back and I apologize if it sounds like I'm beating a dead horse. With a five-member board, you're relying on five people to make decisions for residents in this town that could stand well after these five people are no longer on boards and committees. I think a huge aspect of it is having citizens involvement because citizens need to be more engaged in town as it is. And this will actually give them an opportunity to see how it works. And I actually think it would benefit because I think with citizen representatives, we actually have an opportunity where once they learn how meetings and agendas go, they may be more likely to throw their hat in the ring for another board or committee.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Gasper.
The two thousand eight master plan had roughly twenty-eight individuals on different subcommittees that evolved around that two thousand eight master, master plan committee. Twenty-eight different individuals.
I get, I understand your point and I have no issue. I don't think we have any issue with inviting more people to be on the committee. I don't. You want to invite some more people, we'll, we'll put it out to the boards. I'll encourage it. The only thing that isn't, might be an issue is the timeline. Is that we have to have this majority of it done in six months. And the more people you put on a committee, the harder it is to nail down a meeting day, a Zoom day or whatever. It's, as you know, everybody has busy schedules and it's hard to nail down, oh, I can't make it this day. I can't make it that way. We'll add more people to the board. I have no issue with that.
So you, you should be planning on having these kind of meetings probably six P M. It might be.
Absolutely.
There's a lot of working people out there, right?
Absolutely.
That ain't going to take time out of their day to come sit around here, eat cupcakes and figure out where the next zoning district's going to be in the town of Acushnet, right? There's some basic things that need to be done to get the master plan updated. I think the more input we get, the better off we're going to be. I think if you want to send out a memo to boards and committees, CONCOM, Board of Health, Board of Assessors, FINCOM, and just ask them, say this, you know, whatever nights you think that these committee meetings might be on is, do you have any individuals on your board of committee that would be interested in sitting on a master plan committee on these, on, on this day, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, whatever it may be? Figure it out, right? And said, on what days are they available at six P M? And say, on what days are they available at 6:00 PM? And see what the consensus is, maybe you can just nail it down that way.
And I, I agree with that. I think, like you said, reach out to all above boards mentioned. What I've noticed is most of our community boards, and the meetings happen either Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, the occasional Friday, very rarely on Mondays. Kind of got bookends on Mondays and Fridays. And I think if you come up, you said you were going to have meetings once a month?
Correct.
Pick the dates, give them the options, and say, can you do this, can your representative be here? If you pre-schedule dates, once you come to a consensus of what day is good, and say, okay, here's six meetings in a row, make sure you're available, people will be available for that. I mean, we all, we all, every one of us makes things work. So this way, if the dates are already pre-planned, at least once a month, we can have a backup date if we need it, as long as we post ahead of time. We can also have alternates, just in case, to keep the quorum up.
You've got one member from every one of the, the boards and committees, right? I know Planner's got a couple of them, right? So, big deal. So if you, even if you got one from Board of Assessors instead of two, one from CONCOM instead of two, one from FINCOM instead of two, if that's all they can get in volunteering, that's fine. But at least there's a representative there.
And the other good thing is, is most boards and members in this community do this because they love their sound and they want to see it succeed. So I think actually getting involved in something this big, I mean, the, the master plan's important. And I think the gratitude that they'll have for participating in something that's going to make our town better for the next twenty-five, forty years, I, I think is enough to keep them there. I, I strongly want more people to be involved in this. And it's not because I don't think you guys can't handle it, it's because I want more community involvement and I want more boards involved in this, personally. All I would ask, reach out to the boards before we make a decision. See what we can come up with. I mean, you can send out the notification tomorrow, saying, we want to do this, this, and this. If they come straight out and say, our board has no interest in this, we move on to the next one. But I think by the end of the week, we could get a consensus of what boards actually want to participate, and if they're willing to, whether it's two members or one member. Even with three days left in the week, I'm pretty sure everybody is responsible enough to get back. And we can still progress this, and I mean, we're going to have a meeting next week anyway. So if we have to, not with this specific thing on the agenda, we have another meeting where I have to do something else completely. But if we come up with an idea by, you know, Friday, I can probably get another meeting to appoint and move forward with the size of the committee to at least establish the committee. So, you know, we're all willing to participate, to speed this along, knowing that we only have a six-month timeline to get the brunt of this done. So, i- it's more along the lines of us wanting to make sure that this is done once and done right.
Sure, no, of course. So do you have, you know, a number of how many people you would like to see on?
Kevin said something, I would say, somebody, a representative and an alternate, right? I think that's probably the best way to do this thing, right? So if it's assessors, CONCOM, FINCOM, who else did you say? Board of Health? Board of Health, yeah.
Conservation.
Board of Health?
That's CONCOM.
I mean, what about the schools? They're an elected body.
Whatever, doesn't matter. And then, and then you have like five out large, I mean, they had a subcommittee, and I, and I, and I have a bunch of stuff on the master plan, I actually have the master plan, right? And, and there was, God, I don't even know how many people were on a subcommittee when they were all outside residents, business owners. It was incredible how many people wanted to participate in the master plan, right? I don't, I don't think it's going to hurt anybody, it really isn't.
And if everybody gets back to you and says no, okay, we figure it out, you know?
I don't think that'll happen, no. There's some really committed individuals on these boards and committees that do have a big say in this community. They play a big role, I mean, we have Everphilis still in our audience, right? The Conservation, I mean, he played a big role in CONCOM. I mean, that, these are the kind of people that you want. People that are committed to the town and have been committed to the town, right?
Look, we know that your intentions were in the right direction, you got to get moving, right? I mean, you guys know you got to get moving, you got to get moving. So this, I hope that you don't interpret this as being, you know, getting a finger whacked.
Not at all.
If that wasn't the case.
We're just putting our.
You got to get a lot of public outreach, right? So that's the other thing, is wherever the master plan committee gets established, if you're going to get moving, which I don't like being thrown under the bus and saying, everybody's got to get moving, make quick decisions and make irrational decisions because we're behind the curve, that's BS, right? So if we need to pump the brakes, then that's what we're going to do to figure it out and make it done right, right? Six months, we got six months, you got to stop figuring out schedules? We'll stop figuring out schedules, and how are you going to do public outreach to get other people from the community? If nobody shows up, say you're doing that council on agent, right? Slide boards and big cardboard things and showing people areas of town, and this is what we're thinking about over here. If nobody shows up, nobody can ever criticize all of us that we didn't try to engage the public, right? We did our job. But that's, that's, we can't just say, form a committee, go do it, and bring us this master plan, and everybody's going to buy into it, right? That's the problem, you're going to do a lot of public outreach. So you're going to, you're going to have to do three, four, maybe even five public outreach ones, and see what happens. I mean, if you, you do one, two, and nobody's showing up, then maybe you just say, let's just do one more and have a nice day, right? Nobody's showing up, but you got to figure that out and see where the community's at. Hopefully, we'll get a lot of people showing up to these public outreach nights, right?
The six-month limit is for the public outreach and what Serp Ed's doing.
Correct.
After that, it's going to be, it's going to be a lot more done by not only the staff, but the various boards.
Yep. All right. If you wouldn't mind, like I said, reach out to them tomorrow. I think by Friday, we should have an answer, just reach out to me or Mr. Kelly directly, or Tom here at Sydney, and say, listen, we got this consensus, and we can put it together, and I'll just add it to my next agenda. And this way, we can keep the wheels moving and facilitate this as, as fast as possible, but make sure that we have some, some gusto behind it.
Sounds good, thank you so much.
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to, because we haven't established the actual official committee yet, I am going to hold off on appointing the two gentlemen from your planning board. But if they're on board, consider it done the next time we actually do, actually formulate the official committee with the correct number, or whatever number we can come up with, and I'll appoint them at the same time.
Okay.
All right. Do you guys have anything else on the master plan?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to the draft ADU bylaw. Victoria, I've gone back and forth a couple times with you, and I, I've been really paying attention to this because I'm a big fan of the state not telling us what to do. So I was pretty invested in this because it was the state telling us what to do. So you, you, I expressed to you some of my notes on how I felt about it, but I haven't heard from either of my colleagues here. So I would ask if either of you have any suggestions or concerns? I did add some since the last time we spoke, but I open it up to Mr. Gasper and Mr. Warner.
Yeah, for my, my first read, and I've watched what other communities are doing as we spoke, this looks like it's, you're looking to put some guide rails in place to, in some protections, right? For, you know, the verboes of the, you know, the short-term rentals and some other things. So maybe if you can just speak to what you're proposing, how that is different from what the state is allowing? Or, you know, like, just speak to the protections and guide rails that you've talked about, or talking about here, I think would be really helpful.
Yeah, of course. So the draft bylaw is very preliminary. We did send this out to departments to try and get some feedback as well. But, so, sorry, to answer your question first. Basically, the, a couple things that we added in that were not from the state law. Our rentals must exceed thirty continuous days, effectively, you know, prohibiting short-term rentals. Fire department approval, and then, you know, a little caveat that additional permits from other town departments are obtained as required. It is still very unclear what the state considers a reasonable restriction, if, you know, ADUs can be different sizes, if we have to have an additional ADU permitted by special permit, that's why that's on there. But the state, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities were authorized to create guidelines, and they did say they will be creating those, similar to what they did with MBTA communities, how they kind of came out with that afterwards. They're going to be doing something similar. They did not give a timeline about when they'll be doing that. But they did say, all of these questions that municipalities are asking will be answered in there, and there will be a public comment period for us to engage with that and give our comments.
Quick question. As I was reviewing it again today, what's the exact date that this actually goes into effect? Because if I read it correctly, it said January 2nd, 2025.
February.
February. Okay. So, at this point, they are saying they're going to update the guidelines. We can't create a bylaw and pass it until town meeting. Does that put us in a position where February 2nd, 2025, Dave decides to put an ADU in his yard, all his neighbors do the same thing, and we don't have a bylaw on record?
That's correct, you'd have to adhere, yes, you would have to adhere to the state law, exactly as it's written. I mean, our setbacks, things like that would, would still apply. But yeah, it would revert back, so like, right now, I think you can do it by special permit in certain areas. That would, the state law would supersede that come February 2nd.
So now, number four on the purpose and intent, you've got protect stability, property values, and the residential character of a neighborhood. How does adding little mini homes in everybody's yards do that?
By restricting, right? I mean, by, by putting some guide rails in place, I think that's the.
We did not decide to start putting mini homes in people's yards.
No, I understand.
This is what came to the state.
But the bylaw says protect stability, property values, which are going to go up once I put a little mini house inside my yard, right? My values are going to go up. So it's not protecting property values. And then residential character of the neighborhood, you're blowing that right out of the water because you're adding more little houses on everybody's single-family lots that are around town right now. You're creating little mini villages in cities.
I'm not arguing with you, we did not write that. That is what was mandated to us.
Okay. So, on the additional accessory dwelling units with one more, I wrote, you know what I wrote? No effing way, right? So that's out. There is no way in hell that this town, and I don't believe the townspeople should ever allow, first of all, these ADU units, we already do allow by special permit, by zoning board of appeals. But when somebody's stuffing something down our throats, that's when they piss me off. And that's exactly what the state's doing right now. Using executive powers to do this to our communities, take over our local zoning control, is absolutely BS. And that's what she's done, and that's BS, all right? We should not be making things less stringent, we should make it as stringent or more stringent, and see what we can get away with. So additional ADUs, so now you have two little houses on one single-family lot? And as far as the rental thing goes, you want to see me circumvent the law right now, right out of the gate, before it's even implemented? So it says my ADU can't be a rental property, right? Unless it's more than thirty days? What prevents me from moving out of my house, living in my little ADU and renting my house as an Airbnb? Nothing. It's how fast I circumvent that dumb law that she's trying to push down everybody's throat. See that? It's garbage, and that's what aggravates me, is when somebody comes in and starts pushing things down our throat. The taxpayers and the residents of this community over the last hundred and fifty years have spent all their money and worked hard to build this community to what it is and how it looks like now. And now we're going to have somebody come in and tell us what you're going to really look like in ten years from now? Really? I think everyone that pays taxes in this town and lives in this town should be extremely upset with what's going down right now from that governor's office. That's my opinion, because that's BS. Because it gets worse. Somebody that's going to build a five-lot subdivision now in town after this passes, they're going to go, oh, you know what, no problem, so I'm going to put up a eighteen-hundred-square-foot home? I'm going to build my little nine-hundred-square-foot home right there? My five, my five-house, five-lot subdivision now just became ten dwellings on one five-lot subdivision. How do you like me now?
Depends on the size of the lot, depends on setbacks, depends on.
I understand it depends on certain things, but it can't.
Depends on a lot of things, it can be done.
It can be done.
But this is not something that we brought up, this is something that.
I understand.
So if you want to try to throw in a, a roadblock, go right ahead. This is, we're just informing you what was told to us. And we're trying to throw in our own little roadblocks by adding only allowing one bedroom, by adding no more than thirty days for rental, by adding no, no more than one, but without a special permit. These are things that we and other departments have gotten together and decided we should add to this.
I don't, I don't think, sorry, Mr. Gasper, I don't, I, I just want to be clear. Judging by what Mr. Gasper is saying, and I'm not speaking for him, correct me if I'm wrong, he's not mad at the planning board.
That's what it sounds like to me, but, and I don't know if the people.
This is sort of people at home, he mentioned the state multiple times, and I don't want you to feel like you need to be defensive of something that you had no control over.
Okay.
With that being said, I went through this law multiple times, multiple times. It does not say, it says one ADU, and it does not specifically say anything about special permits for a second or an additional. Because it doesn't force us to have a second right now, I would strike that completely. You're allowed one.
I'm fine.
I would actually put inside that bylaw, no additional ADU units are allowed. I would actually be specific in the bylaw, so somebody doesn't get sneaky and go, well, now I'm just going to go to the zoning board of appeals and get my additional one.
And we can put that, and I'm, I'm fine with that, and I think everybody would be fine with that.
So the state, whoever's coming up with this and giving the governor this advice, they got their heads up their butt, okay? Because they don't know what's going on in those small little towns, and they have no idea. Our infrastructure may not support any of this, and they're going to put that strain on our infrastructure? So that's why it's important that everybody understands that DPW's really part of that, because we have what they call forced mains and sewer in certain areas of this town. There are only two-inch forced mains. How many people you think are tying into that sewer line and bumping crap uphill?
Right, then that would be denied, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be approved for that reason.
Well, I think, I think the bylaw, so I wrote a note on this, and I added a little provision to this. The bylaw should say all sewer and water connections are approved by, which is obviously the Board of Selectmen because we're water and sewer commissioners, right? It's got to be specific in the bylaw, you can't waive a bylaw.
That's really what it comes down to, is the bylaw has to be as strong as it possibly can without violating what the state comes out with. And because we're in a timeframe, once again, you get tossed a bunch of timeframes that isn't really being supported by the state. They're saying, yeah, we'll come up with some guidelines for you. There's only a couple things we can't do. We can't say you need an extra parking space. If you're close to an MBTA train station, bus station, or a ferry terminal. There's only a couple things that they say we can't add to this. I suggest we add as much as possible to make sure that we protect everybody in town.
And, and that's, that's okay, but it's, you just need to keep in mind that if this, if, when the state does come out with those regulations, if we are in conflict with that, it's going to be a problem. So I mean, we can't say what they're going to put in there, what they consider a reasonable restriction, and what they don't. So it's just important to know that more information is forthcoming and might have to, we might have to change our way of thinking.
Yeah, and that's perfectly fine, I'd rather have way too much in there, and then the state comes out and says this, 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 and then we can all fight the state on it. And then we're just going to have to draft a new bylaw, strike it from the record, we can amend the bylaw and do it. I'd rather be on the forefront of it, so this way, by August of this year, somebody hasn't seen the zoning board twice and got two additional because they have sixty acres, and next thing you know, they have a tiny home community in their backyard. Because by rights, they might have enough room, they might have the house, they add this, they add this, who knows? Being as strict as possible now and adjusting later is a better course than leaving it open to interpretation from the people. And I don't even think so much the residents, it's the developers I'm worried about.
And the other thing that you might want to talk to is Mr. Dave Davignon from the Board of Health. He's super intelligent with Title V, and I've had a conversation where we were developing the fifty-five and older community, the bylaw for that, because we kind of copycated Rochester's. And he said the reason why that sub, certain language, when we were reviewing the Rochester bylaw was because if you have a well, it, the Title V law states that you can only have four bedrooms to one acre, if you have a well. So there's a lot going on, and I think there's, there's got to be a lot of people that are well-educated before permits are just started signing out our building department, and nobody's communicating, and you think there's got to be that punch list that needs to be made, like we were talking about, other things in town that we're doing in the planning board, saying, just make a punch list, everybody's going to, you know, check it off. If you come into the Water and Sewer Commissioners and there's a box for us to sign off, if we just write NA, not applicable, have a nice day, but there's somebody signed it to a state and that for the applicant when he comes in to make the process a little smoother, right? Same thing's going to be done for this bylaw, I believe. I mean, it's really going to be a punch list of everything that's going on. Is there a well on the property? No, okay, check that box, right? The, the building department can do all of that stuff, but the building, I even talked to Andy, I don't even know when it was, a month ago, six weeks ago? And he was unaware of what I was talking about with the, the four bedrooms per acre, right? And people get sneaky, so they got a four-bedroom system, septic system A. So, they got a four-bedroom system, septic system A, let me circumvent Board of Health. I'm gonna take the closet out of that room, take the bedroom door off of that room, right? It's a den or whatever it is. The building inspector gives the permit for the little ADU. When he's gone and everything's been inspected, occupancy permit for the ADU, throw my closet back in, put my bedroom door back on. Now, I got five bedrooms and a four-bedroom septic system. Follow me?
I do.
This is the problem when somebody tries stuffing things down people's throats, right? Without putting any thought into the process. And I'm not, by any means, if that's what you thought, blame it planning board. Absolutely not, right? It's just, it's outrageous that we have somebody using, I guess, state of emergencies now for any old excuse to get things done, right? It's a form of tyranny is what it is, really, in my opinion.
So, we'll add a few more amendments to this draft. And once Victoria has added some more of the amendments that you brought up tonight, we'll send it back to you and see if you like it.
I think we need to really wait until whatever, you said it, you're...
Well, we don't...
About the extra additional time that they're reviewing and they want public input. I mean, I'll go on the website and maybe add some of my own comments.
You can't add anything before February 2nd? Is that what you're saying?
We can't actually enforce a bylaw unless it's passed by...
And when's the town meeting for, spring meeting?
May.
Way out with May.
So, between now and May, between now and May, whatever the state has put out is what's valid.
The only thing we can really do...
Is a special town meeting.
Is a special town meeting if we had to. Or if these permit applications do come in, continue the meetings until we get to the point where we have a bylaw. And that's really adding burden to the planning board, Board of Health, anybody that has to actually...
As long as there's no time restraint.
So, I think if the application comes in prior to the bylaw, the application's not, that applicant won't be affected by the bylaw change because it was done after the fact, right? So, we gotta, I don't know how you're gonna get through February to May or whatever it is. And again, that's what's putting, maybe that's a recommendation that town should be sending to the governor's office on this website and say, hey, you know what? Why don't you pump the brakes because nobody's going to town meeting until at least April or May, right? Give us time.
Yeah, I mean, I think they shouldn't, well, the state does what they want, but they shouldn't implement it until they actually have all...
You would think.
But they're not going to.
You would think.
They're not going to.
Victoria, I'm gonna send you my notes for this too, just in case. Once again, we are not attacking the planning board. We appreciate the fact that you're on top of this. Our frustrations come from a different place, and we're here to do our best to protect the town and make sure that people with five-house subdivisions don't turn into ten-house, even if their setbacks are there and they can. We're just trying to make sure the impact on the town because the more people we add to the town, the higher the expenses go up. Especially if there's children involved, like he said, if somebody moves into their ADU and rents out their house, next thing you know, you got three kids. That's $45,000 worth of expense to schools now. And we gotta think about all of this grand plan aspect of it.
Agreed.
You basically made two grand in revenue. But as Miss Dinkley just said, if you've got three kids, right? That's $45,000. You just lost $43,000. Have a nice day. It's a great way to do business, ain't it?
Yep.
That's the problem with government.
Yep. Cool.
So, we'll figure it out moving forward. But I think we all need to just kinda sit on our hands and keep them warm until we figure out what's coming out of the state.
I'm just gonna say, Bob, to echo what you said, hats off to Victoria for trying to get ahead of this and Mark, because I feel like sometimes we're so reactionary. That's why we're always playing catch-up. We're getting pantsed on some of this stuff. So, stop this conversation early.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that's what, you know, try to get the draft as best we can. We'll go from there.
Gentlemen, I would ask if you do have any notes that you would like to reiterate, please send them over to Victoria or Mark and, or both. And this way, we can just stay ahead of the curve.
Yep.
All right.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too.
You're just starting the public hearing a little late.
Yep. We're gonna, we're gonna skip, not skip, we're gonna start the public hearing right now. And then we'll go back to these last two agenda items. That's all right? We just, we don't have to open it. It's already open, right?
No, you have to open the public hearing.
Reconvene.
Reconvene, yeah. Is there a motion to reconvene the public hearing for tax classification?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Hi, Kelly.
Hi. So...
Be the ant.
I'm gonna get anything, sorry. Yeah, okay.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks again, Everett.
Hey, thank you.
Good night, Mr. and Mrs. Phil.
Good night.
Good night.
I don't know where this plugs in. So, do I need to be in this plug-in? Because I know usually Jimmy handles this stuff. Oh, the right one, right?
Oh, that's an A G in my computer doesn't have it.
Yeah, right. This one?
Next one.
Next one. Ah, thank you.
You're welcome. Did I just shut your computer off?
You did. Hey, okay, sorry.
No worries.
Now, back to our program. Okay. So, again, we're going over classification as, just to recap from the last time on November 6th. I had done the scenario of a maximum levy, tax levy of $22,858,743. After going into having more information on the recap and other, and dissecting out the other revenue sources, the levy now, proposed levy that would most likely be submitted is for $22,761,61. And that's with putting $174,171.21 for abatements and exemptions, leaving $97,000 and change in excess levy capacity. That, and that's just the difference of the $98,000 from the original maximum levy of the 22.8 million. Do you want me to, I'm gonna go over information I already did. Do you want me to continue as such or no? You tell me.
Gentlemen, do you want Kelly to continue?
I mean, it's kinda redundant stuff. I just basically changed the levy amount.
Just the levy amount.
Right, and by doing that, I provided, sorry for the shorter notice than it was, but the difference of what we're looking at versus what we had before. The sheet with the blue on top, that's the levy. That's the levy that's probably gonna be submitted on the recap, which is the $22,761.61. So, if you compare the 35% that was ratified last year to 35% that could potentially be ratified this year, that's the difference in the two blue columns. So, the single rate will go from 11.41 to 10.78. And the CIP rate would go from the 16.31 to the 15.21. And that's on the Excel sheet that I'm talking about. But this looks like this. And I'm getting these numbers from the first page of the recap that's currently in Gateway. If you want me to launch Gateway so we can know what the other revenue sources are, I can do that too. Right now, it's, I mean, I'm not sure how you want me to go forth with the information. Ultimately, at hand, we need a tax rate, gentlemen. We need a tax rate in order to get the tax bills out timely by December 31st. This process needs to be done internally at the latest by December 20th. So, that means the tax rate would need to be set at least, I mean, pushing it to the envelope 20, 48 hours prior to the 20th of December. And that's basically for myself and the treasurer collector to have everything done to press the button within the 48 hours. So, this is, you know, time is of the essence.
So, just to confirm, the 20th?
Is the, that's my last day, as you, I mean, I'm gonna be out on medical leave. That's my last day, the last day that I will be available to do anything in regards to getting this process done.
So, 48 hours? 15 is absolutely...
But realize that we can't put the car in front of the course. We need to submit this recap in order for the process to be done.
Correct.
So, that's kind of where we're at right now.
Okay.
So...
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Mr. Gasper.
I appreciate what Ms. Koska's telling us and giving us 48 hours. But I have to respectfully disagree. And we've talked about the December 15 deadline being the latest. I do not wanna put her under undue stress or the treasurer's office under undue stress. And God forbid, we did something foolish like that and something would've happened to either Ms. Koska or our treasury department where they can't come to work. In that 48-hour period, we're done.
Correct.
So...
I agree.
It could be, it's done, it could be done, but it's probably gonna cost the town a little bit of money to get it done, you know?
I'm all set.
The expeditious thing.
I have to agree with Mr. Gasper. I don't think anybody should have to spend their last day before I leave stressing out.
I'm already pre-stressing. It's like pre-fighting.
I agree.
I'm doing that right now. So, I mean, I don't know how to express that more clearly and with, you know, with more passion. But this needs to get done in order for those bills to get out, which are necessary. Statutorily, we have till December 31st to be postmarked. Period, end of conversation. We're a quarterly town. This needs to get done. And I know we've had some bumps in the road in getting there in this journey this year, but I don't know what more to say. It's December 3rd.
Correct.
So, would you like me to launch GLS Gateway right now?
No, sorry, you don't have to.
Okay.
Obviously, we're here tonight because we had continued to this, expecting a certain outcome.
Correct. I mean, ultimately, the difference of the levy, like I had expressed in the other, on the other slide of, from what I presented on November 6th to now is a difference of $98,600. And the change of the levy after so much more information has been put into the recap to tie in to affect the levy versus the other receipts that are coming in to have the $43 million needed to run this down.
Yep. Gentlemen, I would like to suggest we continue this until next Wednesday in the day. I think that a conversation I had with Mr. Kelly today, we're really putting the hammer down on when the recap needs to be completed by. And I don't wanna push it off for two weeks, and I don't wanna come as close to the deadline as possible, but we're already pretty close. So...
I agree.
I would...
Yes.
Take a motion to continue the tax classification here until December 11th at 12:00 PM in the selectmen's meeting room.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
I agree.
Kelly, you have my promise that Mr. Kelly and I, Dave and Gavin, we're gonna make this happen as fast as we humanly can.
I'm not trying to be a pain in the ass, though.
Kelly, and I keep repeating this, you've done your part. And I don't want you to feel like this lands on your shoulders.
Oh, and believe me, it's not, it's not that. I just know this not getting done timely will have a ripple effect that is so much bigger than my anxiety over it and, you know, the anxiety, the anxiety that other people are going through to get this done. That's my concern, honestly.
I just gotta ask a question. If it doesn't get done, what's the penalty? The Department of Revenue comes in?
No, you have to do a third preliminary bill. And that changes all of the deadlines as to when the town can statutorily...
I'm not adding that.
Statutorily impose the interest.
What I'm getting at.
You sense that?
Where I'm going with this is, gentlemen, our financial, not our, the numbers, our ability to administer our finances has turned into an abject disaster. Not for lack of trying, not because the board didn't try and put people in place or try and pay people appropriately. Unfortunately, we had what we thought were two good hires. Leave us high and dry. That's number one. And I would say, while we're not in receivership, because that speaks to another...
That's the worst.
That speaks to another problem.
Absolutely.
I would say our structural problem would be the equivalent of being in receivership. And if the Department of Revenue, if there's any local services they can provide, and I've talked to Mr. Kelly, we need a SWAT team to get in here and help us out because town accountants aren't just gonna fall out of the sky. But we've gotta either come up with a game plan to actively recruit the best and brightest because all of this master plan, all these great ideas that we have, if we have zero credibility financially, none of this stuff matters. So, we gotta open up, we can have a discussion on how we're gonna get somebody in that seat who knows what the hell they're doing and is gonna stay in that seat.
But the here and now, David, just, as I'm saying, is the timeline. You know, you don't want that.
I got you.
I know you do.
I'm running paralel tracks.
I understand completely. And I couldn't agree with more with your statement. It all comes down to money.
The brakes aren't getting touched. Let's go.
It all comes down to money.
Yep. Absolutely.
All the other things come into play if you have it to spend.
All the other stuff is fluff.
Yep. Priorities more.
Yes. All right. Very good. Thank you.
There's a motion to continue till December 11th, Mr. Chairman, at 12:00 PM.
Yep. He seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
See, I told you it wouldn't be six. All right, we can jump back in. Good Energy Aggregation Plan Review, Mr. Kelly.
Want to reconvene?
Oh. Second. All those in favor?
No, it's, you had the motion to continue.
Yeah.
Public reop.
Whatever, reconvene, reopen. I mean, a motion to reconvene, reopen.
Enough. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good Energy Aggregation Plan Review.
All right. The Good Energy Aggregation Plan is an aggregation plan for electricity that gives citizens an option to have a better rate. DPU has mandated annual 30-day public review period prior to any plan update or annual filing. The town must issue a press release, circulate flyers, put notice in various social media. Good Energy will provide us with the verbiage that DPU wants. This is a change in procedure from the past. DPU is streamlining it, putting less hurdles in to get this started. Good Energy will update the program website that they run, copy of the plan, an online comment form, and a short video presentation. If there are any questions that are put forward, Good Energy will answer them. They'll log all comments, provide summary comments, provide a memo to update the Board of Selectmen. If the Board wants them to come in, they will come in. Provide whether any changes to the plan are appropriate, and after that, Good Energy can complete the process by filing a revised plan if necessary with DPU. Good Energy is proposing that we start on Monday, December 9th to go through Monday, January 13th. That way, if they need to come before the Board in February, they can do it and still get the DPU filing deadline. According to what I understand from Good Energy, this, these changes with DPU have been, uh, coming for the last three months and they've dropped recently.
Mr. Kelly, just to, just to verify, so anybody that's paying attention at home knows, if you happen to see a Kushner CEA on your utility bill, Good Energy is the company or the R?
Organization.
The organization that puts that in, which is a discounted rate from direct supply from the utility. So, anybody that wants to be involved in this public comment period, December 9th through January 13th, should pay attention to Good Energy and file comments during this review period, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just so everybody knows, the CEA is cheaper than most other suppliers, so it is pertinent to pay attention to what this is, because most likely, the utility company goes up every year, CEA locks it in for three usually. So, it's good to have a good CEA number to save yourself a couple cents of supply, which does add up with large amounts of power usage. So, people pay attention to this.
If ever a source loses a couple of cents on one end, but then they bang the snot out of you on the delivery charge.
You got that right.
Right? I mean, it's just, it's out of control. Again, state agencies letting companies do this, right? They don't care. So much for regulation.
All right, so no vote needed right now, Mr. Kelly?
No vote at all. It's just I wanted to make sure
Make sure we knew about it.
The board knew, and if you get questions from the public,
Yep.
you can address them to the various websites.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna suggest that we might post something on the town website.
They're, they're gonna give us the whole, uh, issue that DPU, how we address all our social media, how we address our website.
Is that coming out before the 9th? I want people to know where the website is, because that's the biggest concern for the public.
It's coming out for our social media and our website, and then it'll be direct them to theirs.
Correct. I'm talking about before December 9th, so everybody at home knows what website to go to to put their public comment in. I wanna put something up so they know what website. This way, they know they're on the right website.
It's all designed that way.
Perfect, excellent. All right, last item, delegation of authority letter to town administrator. Is this, is this the grant we were just discussing?
No. This is Pam Lavanti, the town clerk, uh, brought that up. I had no response to it. We're trying to look through previous, oh, if there was anything, previous folks. We contacted former staff. They said that it could be just in an email, which I don't understand. So we're, now, as you can see, this was November 26th. So we're now going through all the files in the office back in 2022 to see what, if anything, was done.
Okay, so at this point, we have to verify if anything was.
Yeah, I'm just bringing this up to the boards.
Is it, is it you personally, or is it just the position of town administrator?
It's the position.
That could have been done years ago in a job description.
No, uh, it, it has to be every time you fill the position.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Now, uh, I know I signed a, a number of documents when I came on. I just, they haven't even found that file.
Okay.
It seems crazy to me that we have to, that every time there's a new town administrator, you have to vote.
No, it's, uh.
I'm confused.
If you let an interim, you'd have to vote for an interim.
Okay.
It's legality.
Most.
Yeah, I would suggest, you know, if you do find anything, let us know. All right.
I found stuff that I've got.
Can we just take a vote on it?
Motion to, uh, I'll, you got selectmen's announcements. You wanna do that?
Yeah, I would hold off on the vote until we have to know for certain, because I still like having the ability to look at stuff before.
I, I wanna know what's there.
Yeah. This way, we make sure.
I mean, if, if, I would think that if we had something that came in front of us, it should be embedded always with the board. It says it's our discretion, right? And then we just say, motion to approve the town administrator sign on our behalf, and off the grant goes, right?
I just wanna see it, because it should have been filed with the town clerk.
Get a little crazy if somebody had that authority, just starts signing on behalf of the Board of Selectmen on every little thing that's going on, and next thing you know, there's the fishing string around the neck, right?
I mean, we did it individually for the, the green energy thing for the school. That specific item, we gave you permission that day to do it.
Yeah, well. What ever happened to that thing?
They just read the response.
I wanna see what's there.
Meetings are ongoing. Yeah, right. Selectmen's announcements, anybody?
Just give a shout out to my friends, Rick and Ange.
Just one?
Who's that?
I don't.
Just friends.
All right. To our licensees, if you have not come in, please re-up your liquor license, amusement license, all of the above.
Oh, you might wanna notify the Board of Health to make sure he does his inspections, right? That was a criteria last year that he kinda missed out on and got him in late.
Good call, though.
So, good reminder on that.
You can do it on Unipay.
You can do it online, from what I understood.
That meeting will be the 17th, so please get in and pay that beforehand, or we will not be able to renew your licenses. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.